Yes, sir.
Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting door and like to welcome everyone here tonight. For those of you that came and were expecting to see item number seven as a public hearing item, it will be moved to a public hearing item under land use and so if you are planning on speaking, you'll certainly be allowed to do so. This time I'd like to ask you to join us and invocation led by Commissioner Murphy followed by the pledge by, led by Commissioner Browning.
Please bow your heads and join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come to you tonight with an overwhelming sense of thanks and gratitude for all of your many blessings, most particularly for your beautiful Golden Isles, which we are privileged to call our home. Please watch over the assembly this evening and guide us in our deliberations and decisions such that we may, such that we might bring honor to your name. As always, continue also to keep our first responders safe, those men and women who do so much to protect us, keep them in your graces so that they might return home each and every night to the ones that love them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
May the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have one public comment speaker tonight, Mr. Smith, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simon's Island and I'm here tonight to ask if Glen County, is Glen County really prepared for hurricanes? I'm going to assume all seven of you read the email I sent you yesterday morning with a copy of the open letter to you by me, or from me, that was published in the Brunswick News yesterday morning, opposite the editorial page and next to the weather report. And I think we really need to pay attention to our weather reports, particularly the long-range ones. For the benefit of the audience, I'm going to read the seven questions I posed to you in my open letter. Dear Commissioners, the imp- I'm sorry, the questions. First, why have you refused to hold public hearings on how Glen County can and should prepare for hurricanes, storm surges, and coastal flooding? Second, why have you refused to limit or prohibit development in flood-prone areas of Glen County and those areas most likely to be inundated by storm surges? Three, why have you refused to survey the citizens of Glen County to find out how many did or did not evacuate from the mainland or from the islands when mandatory evacuation was ordered for Hurricane Matthew and Irma? Fourth, why have you refused to ask those citizens who did not evacuate, why they did not evacuate? Five, fifth, why have you refused to survey the citizens of Glen County to find out how many are unlikely to evacuate for future hurricanes or tropical storms if ordered to do so? Sixth, why have you refused to understand, or to admit you understand, that you must do something more than advise citizens to be prepared to evacuate when ordered to do so? And finally, why have you refused to identify those buildings on our mainland and on our islands that are strong enough to shelter citizens who do not or cannot evacuate in time before evacuation routes are cut off by rising water? Now, you have a very light agenda this evening, though I notice you are planning to amend it to have a public hearing on the surface mine issue, for which I thank you. But your agenda is fairly light, so let me request that you amend your agenda to discuss some of these questions I've asked. And let me confess that I understand and sympathize with your plight, the plight of being confronted by an obnoxious old professor who is challenging you to be brave and agree to talk about things you don't want to talk about and to talk about them in public at a proper, public meeting or forum on this issue. Now, I have lived through many hurricanes and have probably seen, and have probably seen, smelled, touched, and helped recover and bury more hurricane victims than all of you combined. That's why I'm asking these questions. I'm going to pause briefly to wait for a response, any kind of response.
Would anybody like to respond to Mr. Smith?
Is that a response, sir? If you don't want to answer any of my questions tonight, then let me paraphrase a recent recipient of the Nobel Prize for Literature. This is a paraphrase, not a direct quote. The answers, my friends, are blowing in the wind. The answers are blowing in the wind. Don't let them blow you away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir. All right. Commission presentations and announcements, we have a proclamation tonight and I'm, I had a little eye procedure yesterday and I'm going to ask Commissioner Browning if he'll do the proclamation down to my signature.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to read this proclamation because my wife of forty-five years is a twenty-five-year survivor of breast cancer. So, means a lot to me to, you know, for us to recognize what this proclamation recognizes and, and what it's about. So, proclamation, October 1, 2018, Breast Cancer Awareness Day. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States, accounting for nearly one in three cancers diagnosed in women, and whereas death rates are forty-two percent higher in black women than white women, and black women are more likely to be diagnosed at later stages of breast cancer, with the lowest survival rate at each stage of diagnosis, and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is dedicated to raising, is dedicated to raising awareness about risk factors which contribute to breast cancer and early access to mammogram screenings are essential to increasing the survival chances for women, and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated has a goal to reach one hundred thousand women in four years throughout the United States and the communities they serve worldwide in order to share information about breast cancer, increase awareness regarding risk factors that contribute to breast cancer, and provide access to mammograms in their communities as well as mammograms through the AKA Mobile Breast Cancer Screening Unit and targeted communities, and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Iota Omega Chapter, will engage in community outreach and education activities designed to increase breast cancer awareness and facilitate linkages between women and affordable screening and treatment programs while coordinating awareness activities with local community partners. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby recognizes October 1, 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Day in Glen County?
In witness thereof, I set my hand this twentieth day of September 2018. Bill Brunson, Chairman, Glen County Commission.
Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Sabrina Nixon and I bring you greetings from Zeta Iota Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, where each member is dedicated to supreme service to all mankind and the Brunswick Golden Isles community. With me I have the Chairman of our Women's Health and Care Committee, Ms. Felicity Littles.
Thank you. We're thankful for this proclamation which serves as an awareness tool to assist us in spreading the message to all women on breast self-awareness. We encourage women to know their risks, get screened, know their normal, and make healthy lifestyle, healthy lifestyle choices as recommended by the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. Thank you so much, Glen County Commissioners, we greatly appreciate the support.
All right. Public hearing items, alcohol beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number two, consider the issuance of a 2018 alcoholic beverage license to George Reichen, Buckhead, Frederica Hospitality Group LLC, DBA, Frederica Golf Club Pro Shop, 100 Pike's Bluff Drive, St. Simon's Island, Georgia. The license is to sell packaged wine only, not for consumption on premises of a retail store. Sunday sales permitted, George Reichen licensee, Chief Powell.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the applicant meets all of the requirements as articulated by the ordinance.
All right. He's here. This is a public hitting, hearing item, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the, to the alcohol license may do so. Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve the alcohol beverage license.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the, of the alcohol license, beverage license, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, good luck to you, sir. All right, public hearings, land use. My understanding is that item number three has been withdrawn per the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the applicant withdrew this afternoon.
All right, thank you. All right.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take item number seven under general business and place it as item number three under public hearing, land use.
All right, we have a motion to, motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, item number seven, under public hearing item land use, ZM 3785, 725 Harry Driggers Boulevard, consider a rezoning request to make a revision to amend the existing Golden Isles Gateway Plan Development, CG 34-99. The revision would allow surface mining as a permitted use within a ninety-eight acre area for a period of up to eight years. Parcel ID 03-15739, Stuart Tate, agent for RLF Kingsland Properties LLC, owner and applicant, Ms. Leaf.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 3785 and I will go through some of the changes since the last time you saw this application. Just for, for refresher, they have had two public hearings on this item. There is the Mainland Planning Commission, public hearing on July 10th of 2018, and it was unanimously recommended to the Commissioners to approve the application with some conditions. And the Board of Commissioners held a public hearing on August 2nd, 2018, and the Board unanimously deferred the application to tonight. And this is the property, this is Harry Driggers right here, this is Highway 17 over here. And the surface mining will be right in this location, this is Carriage Gate subdivision, in this location. So the application had originally included for the surface mining area on this parcel, the total acreage would be eighty-six acres that would be affected by the surface mining. They have updated this to include ninety-eight acres, but the additional acreage is only for the access road. The comments from the Board of Commissioners on August 2nd was to have the applicant look at a potential access to Highway 17 to, for dump trucks to use to go to the mine so they are not on Harry Driggers. And so the application, or the applicants have looked at that, and so their revised application shows the access road going to Highway 17. So the actual burrow pit operations will be forty-five acres and that remains the same from what you saw on August 2nd. And since that meeting, the applicants have applied for a wetlands permit with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they've also applied for a driveway access permit with Georgia Department of Transportation. And at this time, they do not have feedback or many approvals from those two entities, but they have submitted the applications and they are beginning the review process with those entities. And so they are expecting that the permitting process will be approximately nine months and that the construction of the new road, once, if it is approved, will be about two to three months for the construction of the road. So what the applicants are requesting of the Board is to allow them to use Harry Driggers Boulevard for a period of twelve months in order for them to begin the mining operations while they await going through the permitting process with the two agencies. And so they are proposing to use Harry Driggers for twelve months and restricting the dump truck loads to fifty per day. So that would be, what that equals to is really an empty truck going in and then a full truck going out would equal one truckload. So they would limit it to fifty loads per day. And so this is the, their amended application, this was the road to Harry Driggers that was shown to you in August, and this is what they would like to use for twelve months while they await their permitting. And this would be the new road that would access Highway 17 and right, this location is where they would have the wetland impacts, and there's about a half acre of wetlands that would be impacted by this roadway. And so, as I mentioned, the total acreage has increased by twelve acres and that is just to accommodate for the new access road. So there are a number of conditions that staff has put together, working with the applicant, and they are amenable to, to all of these, that would address some of the, some of the issues. So in this list of conditions, it talks about using the, using the Harry Driggers access for twelve months. If they do not get their permitting, then they would have to cease operation entirely at the site. And we do have some dates that we would say by September 20th of 2019 is when either the operations have to cease if they haven't gotten permitting, or if they do have their permitting, they can no longer use Harry Driggers and they would have to use the new Highway 17 access. So it's just continuation of the twelve conditions. And just some that are carried over from, from the planning commission's recommendation and what you saw in August, they would continue to, they, while they're using Harry Driggers, if that is approved, they would only be able to turn east on Harry Driggers, they could not turn west and go past the schools. The only time they could go west would be to service Carriage Gate subdivision, and they would be limited to when the public schools are, are in school and it's not the drop-off period. So they could, they could only serve Carriage Gate from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. when school is in session. They would need to cover all of the trucks. And, and also any other improvements that would need to be made to Harry Driggers that our Public Works Department and Engineering Services would require that they would need to make those. So if there's any, any damage to the road, anything that might impact the roadway while they're using it for a year, they would need to be making those improvements. So that's kind of in summary what the changes are, and I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicants are here this evening as well.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. Retention ponds for most construction here in Gold County, do they require state surface mining permit to dig a retention pond?
Not that I'm aware of. No, not, not for an actual mining permit, no.
I was just curious, but if you're going to dig a pond, you have to get a mining permit, correct?
If you're digging the pond for, for sale of the dirt off the property, is my understanding is where that triggers the surface mining.
It's over a half acre, I think.
Over a half acre.
Actually, it's, yeah, if you, if you mine one acre or less and you keep the dirt on site, you do not require one. However, if you remove the dirt from site, regardless of whether you sell it or not, you have to get a mining permit, I do believe.
That is my understanding and I, the applicants can address that more clearly as well.
So if I had a construction project and I needed a two-acre retention pond, I would by law have to get a state mining permit to do that, would I not?
I don't know if you would get the mining permit. I know locally, I mean, the LDA permit that we, but for mining, I don't know. I know locally, I mean, the LDA permit that we but for mining, I don't know.
Mr. I'm not sure of the answer to that.
I believe you do, but that's okay. If you if you mine over one acre of ground for any reason, you take the dirt off site, then the state of Georgia requires a mining permit to do that, whether it's to sell the dirt or just to relocate it, it doesn't matter. You have to you have to get that. There are other requirements going along with it.
Right. And that that is my understanding. What I what I what I do know of it is, yeah, I think I think off-site is the key, the key. You're right, whether it's selling it or whether you're dumping it somewhere else, the fact that you're leaving the site with it versus if you were digging up the pond and then using that filled dirt somewhere on your property, that would not require the mining permit.
I believe you could actually dig a twenty acre pond if you desired, as long as you kept it on-site.
On-site.
Anytime you dig the dirt off-site, you would need one. I'm just curious, because the applicants are asking to do this. If we turn it down this evening, though, what we're basically saying is nobody's allowed to dig anything bigger than a one acre pond or retention pond or whatever needs to be from now on. That's what I'm my question was focusing on.
Thank you. Are any other questions for staff?
Yes, I have. Only, you had this question a minute ago, if if it was not, if the permits were not approved by EPA and DNR. That as soon as we heard that, was that when they would cease operation?
So the permits would would be for the access roads. I think if if the Commission tonight said, we authorize you to use Harry Driggers for one year, I think they could they could continue to use that for one year. I what I would recommend if that is if you're if you're inclined to let them use Harry Driggers for amount of time, perhaps that is when they do need to stop, at the time that they find out from both entities that they or one entity that they do not have the permitting. Because that way, there's really no, I mean, they wouldn't be able to continue past that twelve months if that is something that.
Okay, also, Commissioner Brownie, I want to ask you a question. I think you probably qualify as anybody.
Go ahead.
What what would you think the weight of one of these trucks would be loaded?
Uh, I don't know. I've never weighed a dump truck with dirt on it, but but let's see, dump trucks can probably have about ten yards max loose, you know, when they dig it out, it gets loose. And I would guess a yard. What does a yard weigh? Twenty-four? Forty-four? Yeah. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
So what I didn't hear, what what?
Forty-four.
Forty-four thousand? Okay. The reason I ask that is, you know, based on what on this temporary use of Harry Driggers, okay? You're gonna have, and I see they have reduced the number of trips down to fifty. Now, I'm picturing fifty dump trucks following one another all day long, going and coming, and in the exact tire tracks, not only on the on the dirt that they're gonna be coming off of, but onto Harry Driggers itself. They're all gonna be making the same left-hand turn in the exact same spot. I would I would be interested to know, with that amount of weight in each truck, and every one of them's making a left turn in the exact same spot, day in and day out, up to fifty times a day. Is that, how's that road gonna stand at? I mean, every time you turn left, you've got forty-four thousand pounds shifting to the right in the exact same spot, day in and day out. And with that said, my concern would be damage to the road, and I'd also like to insert in that area, if there is damage to the road, that they cease the operation at that point until the damage to the roads are are complete, or they need to be repaired right then. We don't need to have our taxpayers riding up and down a damaged road until they get through this project twelve months down the road, probably might not even be any asphalt right there. So that would be my my concern.
Commissioner, if you remember, one of the most or one of the items in the PD TUCs is that they would work with the County Public Works and Engineering to fix or repair any part of Harry Driggers that was damaged.
I know, but my 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 point is, though, fix it as needed, not when you get ready to. Because I mean, if you if you damage it and you don't fix it, you're just gonna continue to damage it. If you've got one hole, the hole's gonna get bigger, 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 bigger. So would would continued use of the of that one particular area right there. I'm I would be still overly concerned about the wear and tear on our road and, you know, what this is gonna, what this is gonna do to the the traffic. I mean, Harry Driggers is not a lonesome road out there by any means. Not only did a lot of people live there, I mean, we've still got two schools to deal with day in and day out. And I see we've addressed some of those concerns here. But there again, I I would still be extremely concerned why we would want to approve a temporary permit here before we know whether they're gonna get permits or not from from the DNR and EPA. It doesn't sound like it's a lot of sense to me. Why why should we open up our road into this this project here, open up our county roads, our county right of ways, not knowing what the EPA and DNR is gonna do? And I mean, they they say up to nine months to approve. Well, suppose they approve, they disapprove in six months. These guys are dead in the water. And so that that's my concern about getting the cart before the horse here. I don't see approving something that's kind of a wing and a prayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, your roads, your major roads, your major arterial roads, they're all have design specifications, and one factor best considered is the potential loads that are gonna go down those roads. I don't know what the design criteria was on that road, but I'm pretty sure it'll it'll hold up forty-four thousand pounds with no problem, you know, but maybe the county has some records going back or or whoever contracted to have that road built. But, you know, forty-four thousand pounds spread out on, one, two, three, four, five, what, ten wheels? About how many, you know, ten wheels, sir? Forty-four thousand pounds spread out on ten wheels is not a lot of weight. It's it's not. So, design criteria, they designed that for that part, I guarantee you, that part of the county, log trucks, because you've got a lot of pulp woods they're out there gonna come out of those woods, gonna be hauled out there on log trucks. And so those roads are legal for eighteen-wheelers fully loaded. Eighteen-wheelers fully loaded are a lot more weight than a dump truck. So I I just don't, personally, I don't see an issue with the weight of the trucks on those roads out there.
Are any any other questions for staff?
That wasn't my point, Commissioner Brownie. Commissioner Brownie, you can you can take a BB gun and eventually kill somebody with it, okay? That's my point. You don't, yeah, it'll take forty-four thousand pounds, but fifty exact trips a day for however many days? I mean, if I'm not mistaken, there was some criteria in here about them possibly working on the weekends if if the if the need was there. So fifty trips a day, if if the need's there and they got they got the trucks to move it with, you're talking, what, four, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty trips in a seven-day week? So that's it's the repetition of the same, 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 not necessarily the the heavy weight of the thing. Yes, it's heavy, but it's just the repetition of the same spot over and over and over. Something's got to wear. And my experience, and I think I went over this once before, out in my area there at the Glencoe Light, there was a excavation operation going on there, and I drove through there one day, and I noticed these, well, coming out of Bell Point, I noticed these dump trucks just busy, busy, busy all day long. They were coming from that direction headed south. Where they were going, I don't know. But for the longest time, we had dirt, mud, and everything you could think of all over Highway seventeen that everybody in this county had to deal with. And especially at the intersection of Glencoe Light, keep in mind, when they excavate this, it's not necessarily gonna be dry dirt. It can be mud. It can be heavily insulated with water. And those dump trucks, the dunks are not water sealed. They drip, and they drip bad. Matter of fact, that particular instance I'm telling you about, I did make a call to Chief Matt Doring at the time, and he was not aware of how bad it had built up. We had several inches of black dirt, all four lanes and all four directions at the Glencoe Light there. People were going down there. If it's dry, it's black dust. If it's wet, it's mud splatter. So I've seen it happen, and that 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 would be my concern. And this operation is ten times as big as what that one was. Thank you.
Any other comments for staff? All right, this is a public hearing item. Those that are, it it this public hearing item is, by the way, is not required tonight by our ordinance, but the sign was left on the property that said it was a public hearing item, and so we are allowing it a public hearing item tonight when it is really not required. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application may do so now? Yes, sir, if you'd come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Post. I'm a resident of Shell Point. My address is one forty-five Wintle Circle. I didn't attend the last meeting, but I would ask Commissioners, how many of you have driven down Harry Driggers Road in the last year?
I live on Harry Driggers.
Okay.
Off of Harry Driggers.
Have you gone to, have you gone Harry Driggers to seventeen?
Yes.
Did you notice all the ripples in the road just when you get to seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, there's a lot of ripples in the road. Now, we talked about Commissioner Coleman asked questions about damages to the road. My experience in life is that hindsight is twenty-twenty. Developer wants to do something. The residents, myself and the other people here tonight, are depending on each one of you to have our best interest at mind in 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 mind without stopping development. The property was planned, it was a planned unit development, and what we're trying to do is turning it into a mine, a mining operation. Does anybody have any idea how much it's gonna cost to repair all the school buses that are gonna be damaged by going down the road that looks like this? Has anybody thought about that? Okay, that's just a point I wanted to mention. My greatest concern is not the roads. Last year, and again this year, I had eighteen, eighteen inches of water in my backyard. The the property is not, our property is not draining well now. When you de-water, what is it, forty-eight acres? They're gonna de-water it. That's millions of gallons of water. Now, I was told in a meeting in HOA, two months ago, I believe it was, that the water's just gonna naturally drain, just this side of the plantation down there, it's just gonna naturally drain right out into the mysteriously gonna gonna drain out into the into the marsh. Well, after it rains, if you drive up seventeen to Highway ninety-nine, the roads, the the swales on each side of the road are full of water. It ain't, it's not going anywhere. And if you pump, if you start pumping millions of gallons, the representative, the civil engineer said, oh, no, it's just gonna drain out there. Well, okay, then if it's just gonna drain out there, there's not gonna be a problem, is there? So maybe we should ask them to provide a bond to remedy any or all flooding or other damage issues that's caused by the de-watering. Do the we're talking about dumping a bunch of water. We approved this, the the county approved this as a planned unit development. I bought property here a year and a half ago. It's a beautiful, I think there's gonna be more development. No one said, oh, there's gonna be a strip mine a mile from your house. Now, the elevation, according to the FEMA flood flood maps, is eighteen feet above sea level. The elevation, according to the FEMA flood map maps that's posted on the county's website for the street in front of our house, is sixteen feet. Where's the water gonna go? I wish you'll consider these things and let's get the answers before we blindly approve this, and then, three years from now, try to figure out, oh, well, how, what are we gonna do? Can we dig a new culvert? Can we put in pumps? Who's gonna pay for it? All right? The developer's gonna do this, needs to be post a bond to protect the citizens of this county, not just take our money for a developer from North Carolina to come in here and rape our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Lisa Norton. I'm gonna give you a different perspective. I travel up and down seventeen, Monday through Friday, twice a day. Have you ever had the privilege of being stuck behind a dump truck? It is a free sandblasting job for the paint on your car. Not only coupled with the congestion that occurs when they normally don't even drive the speed limit and huge clumps of dirt, even if the back of the truck is covered, is flying out the back of the dump truck. Who is going to count to make sure that there are only forty dump trucks a day going out on that highway? Now, what I want to suggest to you as the most important item here is in item eight of the August package here, that this activity will terminate with the permits terminating with DNR. I think there's a gray area here that has not been fully understood. Mister Commissioner Stanbaugh brought up the point that if you are doing surface mining, you have to be permitted. Why would you possibly allow someone to come in and begin surface mining when they have not gotten all of the regulations and permits required to do this type of activity? Now, I understand from reading the nineteen ninety-nine inserts from community development in this packet, that a previous partner in this development contributed quite a lot of property to the county. For example, some property that the new animal control might be built on. The schools are not here in argument of this because some of the property that they're on was contributed by the developer back in ninety-nine, and other tracts of land have been donated. And to me, this was nesting a future agenda, and we are now at the future agenda. If you think of the traffic on Highway seventeen, there are no sidewalks. Every day, I encounter pedestrians walking up and down that road. You have school buses that are already slowing down traffic that we're having to stop for, and rightly so, to let children. Mr. Strickland, I'm talking to you also, sir. And, thank you. I'm up here, if you'd like to look at me while I'm talking. You also have to consider that you have an airport down in that area. Who is this gonna affect? It's gonna affect the schools. It's gonna affect the subdivision subdivision residential areas, and we solicited and marketed for people to come in and build homes in these areas based on a good use of their investments. And what are we telling people now that come into our area and might have to end up being near strip mining? You've got the recreational Hoffel Plantation, you've got the airport industrial site, and you've got travelers such as myself up and down Highway seventeen trying to get to work that are gonna be inconvenienced. You're going to have a further inconvenience of not only the traffic congestion, the noise from the excav- the noise from the excavators, the de-watering systems, the dump trucks, the debris from the trucks, the safety of the travelers. We've already had an accident out on 17 with a dump truck. So what I'm asking is to please consider that this group has not gotten permitting before you allow them to go ahead and stop this operation, start this operation. Um, the 12 items suggested by Community Development seem to suggest that this is a premeditated approval. And now is a perfect time to reconsider allowing this and let them come back after they get their permits. Let's welcome them to the community once they get sufficient permitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith again. And I want to thank you again for deciding to allow the public to speak on this matter tonight. And despite that, I, I, I wonder why, uh, a public hearing was not scheduled in the first place. I believe several, back at the meeting in August, the first meeting in August, I suggested you all leave the public hearing open on this matter. Continue it, um, so you wouldn't have to do notification. Anyway, I'm glad we're having a public hearing. The direct access to Highway 17 is an improvement on what was originally proposed. But it is also a distraction from the real issue, the underlying issue. And that is, should you permit a change in the, the uses, uh, should you amend this text to allow borrow pits to be operated, commercial borrow pits to be operated in the middle of a residential neighborhood? I don't think anyone would have legitimate opposition to, uh, a borrow pit for the development of this particular site. Which brings me to something on page four in the staff report, uh, that you were given, that you should have in front of you. If you go to the middle of page four, to the last sentence in the paragraph with the number five, right above the pretty picture, we have this statement in bold text. It comes from the, uh, planning staff. "As stated previously, the applicant will create a residential subdivision of single-family dwellings after completion of surface mining operations." Now, I don't know where it was stated previously. Um, and I, I would like to know, how does staff know? How do you know? How does the public know that the applicant, which is RLF, Kingsland Properties Limited, a company operating out of Boulder, Colorado, which is in the business of buying and selling large parcels of land, an operation that had this property for sale for three times what they paid for it. Um, and they took the for-sale sign down after I called attention to that. So how do we know this is going to happen? Are you going to get a completion bond from them? Uh, that will guarantee that they personally will, uh, develop this? Now, um, if they operate for eight years and then decide to create a residential subdivision or sell their land to someone who is capable of actually developing a residential subdivision with up to 1,000 dwelling units, which is what is allowed in the PD text you're amending. If the land is developed for single-family dwellings, will thousands of truckloads of fill have to be trucked in to make up for the sand, the dirt, the fill that was taken out? So, uh, before this area can be developed for residential use, there's going to have to be, as with most subdivisions in this county, particularly in recent years, there's going to have to be more, uh, fill. On pages three and four, you have, and page five as well, you have a number of factors that you are supposed to consider in making a decision. You really should go through each of those and discuss them and make it, and, 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 and agree. For instance, if you agree that the property has a reasonable economic use, is currently zoned, then why is there a need to amend the text? These people are not poor. Come on. Um, now, uh, finally, we are told that the transfer of dirt between the subject parcel and the Carriage Gate Plantation subdivision, um, can, can happen. How's it going to happen?
Time's up.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for running over.
That's all right. I'd let you go.
Please, don't approve this.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Hey, I am here solely as a concerned parent. My name is Felicia Brayden, and I am a resident of Shell Point. And my husband and I chose what we thought would be a safe area to raise our, our two boys. We have a four and an eight-year-old. And I travel that road multiple times a day, not only to go to 17, but I also access it to go to my sister and my mother's home. Um, so either direction, I'm, you know, at a loss. But I am concerned because it's already a life-threatening issue when you pull out of Shell Point to take a left. I mean, a right, too, honestly. No cars obey the 25 mile an hour speed limit. So if it's already unsafe, I don't understand the difference in, you know, giving them consent from eight years to one year. What's the, what's the difference in risking all of our lives for a year versus eight years? And I, 16 years ago was, I've already survived poor choice in the, in our community when I was hit by a Seaboard semi before they forelaid the Golden Os Parkway area. And I feel like I'm not just thinking about the what-ifs. I'm thinking about this could happen again, potentially. And I am in fear for mine, my husband, my family, anyone entering and exiting Shell Point safety. And I lived through the dirt mining, and that was, you know, about 100, 10,000 or 100,000 loads of dirt. I mean, I, I really feel like everyone needs to consider all aspects, from the damage, the flooding, to the, the danger of a loaded dump truck. I mean, that is, that's a death sentence. I, yeah, I drive the biggest SUV you could, on the market, but that's no match for a dump truck. I will lose my children. I will lose anybody. I mean, any, the woman that got killed on 17, it still haunts me. And I feel like this is something that everyone looked back and said, something could have been done. But I feel like it's going to happen again, and you are going to wish that you probably would have made things differently. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Miranda Smith. I live in Shadow Lake. Um, I just wanted to say it bothers me that one of the, I'm, I'm not for or against it technically. Um, but it bothers me that at the Mainland Planning Commission, that the planning committee here tells you, well, it was, they say that it was voted unanimously. It was not voted unanimously. I was there that night. Um, we had to wait 30 minutes for a quorum to even be there before the meeting would start. Um, they were deliberating how and why they should approve this, period. And only under the conditions that they would go to the left of, out to 17, in a debate, did that decision of the four vote happen. So it bothers me that they state it that way. Oh, they unanimously voted for this, because they didn't. They had dilemma, just like Mr. Coleman has a dilemma, just like some of the other questions. Um, I also just wanted to say the ripples that are at the end of the road from the solar farm down to 17, when you go to press on your brakes, it is because of the weight of the dump trucks and the heat that came out of the solar farm. And as they're stopping, they're pushing that asphalt, causing those ripples. So that was the only point I'd like to make, but I appreciate your decision either way. If, and one other question, is it 50 loads? Because the way, 50 loads or 25? I mean, 50 trucks is 100 loads. So to me, that needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Ms. Leaf, I think that's 50 truckloads.
Yes, that is correct. It's 50 loaded trucks. So they say one truckload is an empty truck going in and a full truck coming out. So it's 15.
All right, anyone wishing to, else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Yes, Sam Self, 276 Belmont Circle. I would, I have not seen a professional report on what this is going to do to the water table of the lakes. I, I, it appears that the lake behind our house, which is where they'll be digging, closest, about 200 feet from it, it appears it has a, a stream, a, a spring that feeds the other lakes because there's water usually flowing out that culvert to the other lakes. So I'd like to see some kind of professional report to see what this is going to do to the water table of the other lakes in their subdivision. And if it does, uh, decrease the level, then maybe consider pumping some of that, uh, water back into our lake. Thank you.
You say you're at Carriage Gate?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, last chance. All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melinda White. I'm with the firm, the Ligon Law Firm. And I represent, um, the folks who have been painted in various ways here. If the water's going to be too low, the water's going to be too high. It's strip mining, it's a borrow pit. Um, this is a residential area. They are installing some lakes. They'll be creating lakefront property. At the same time, they're eliminating a number of buildable lots. So the ultimate number of homes in the, in the subdivision will significantly decrease. Thus, ultimately, the traffic on the road, once these steps are accomplished, will be less than it could be because of the density of the development. We've been talking about different types of permitting. There's a permitting process for the pits, and there's a separate permitting process for the road. The permitting process for the pits has already been completed with the exception of the commission's approval of the amendment to the zoning text. There was a public hearing last month. We, uh, worked with the suggestions that were made by the commissioners. We are talking about a maximum of 50 trucks, a, maybe 10 on any given day, and a maximum load of 44,000 pounds of dirt. It, it could be far less. Um, a lot of this discussion involved access to 17. That's not really what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about the very narrowly tailored temporary access, which will terminate at a maximum of one year, assuming that it takes that long for the permitting process on the roadway out to 17. That process has already begun. They left here and got started on it right away. Everything is being done to mitigate as much as possible the impacts on Harry Drigger's. And I, I, I do have folks here who can speak to any of the specific concerns that may have been raised if you feel they, uh, they need to be properly addressed.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any questions for the applicant there? All right. A- anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would anyone like to address the hydrology questions that were raised tonight?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name's Charles Ezel. I'm with Thomason-Hutton Engineering. And, um, through the, the comments that we heard, uh, there were questions on what would the operation do to the adjacent wetlands as far as, you know, discharge of the, uh, de-watering that's required for the borrow pit? When the borrow pits constructed, uh, it's 45 acres total is the full permit. But when they go to do the digging, uh, they will be doing it in pods. So the initial five to 10 acres will be cleared. That area would be dug down. Um, they use one pump, which helps bring down the groundwater table so we can dig relatively dry dirt to be loaded. So the, um, the, the flow coming off the site is really negligible in the big picture because the water that comes out of the, the six-inch pump would be discharged into a roadside ditch, and it would travel thousands of feet, uh, over to the wetlands, as the current runoff does already for the site. So where the, where the borrow pit is proposed, it's, it's on the highest point of the property. Um, and the water already, when it, when it rains, precipitation, it runs off to the wetlands, which then flow north and east, under Highway 17, out to the marsh. Uh, the other question that we heard raised was, uh, the pond on Carriage Gate, which is, uh, straddles the property lines of the R4 tract and the Carriage Gate, what the effects could, would be on it due to this operation? The, the distance, the closest distance of the excavation for the borrow pits is approximately 350 feet from the existing lake. And that de-watering activity at the borrow pit is, will not have an effect on the, on the water table of the existing lake. The, the distance is, is far enough away where that de-watering does not transfer through the soil.
So the feasibility of de-watering and putting it back in the lake if it went down is not an issue? Does that make sense? Maybe I don't know what I'm talking about.
No, sir. We, we, we do not see the borrow pit impacting the existing lake.
Okay, all right. Any, any questions for?
Well, I don't know if it's for him or staff. Do we look at, when, when staff is evaluating this for a permit or to move forward, the recommendation, the stormwater runoff from this activity? The impact on the surrounding area?
Sure. Um, yeah, I think it's that question. Because the surface mining is, is valued by, evaluated by the state for that permitting, they, they will be looking at those environmental impacts. There is not a, a county permit that would be issued for the mining operation per se. So, um, that's not something that we have looked at in detail.
So the county staff doesn't look at this. The state looks at this.
Right, the state is evaluating this and permitting, correct?
Before, um, before they issue a permit.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right, seeing none, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to, um...
Mr. Coleman, Commissioner, Commissioner Booker's got a question.
Well, and this is more around the safety issue. I don't know if the chief needs to answer this because we had a young lady that talked about the traffic, just current traffic conditions. I don't know if we've looked at that. Are there any concerns or any more, um, accidents out there now? Or any uptick in the accidents in that area? Uh, I just was concerned based on, um, what she said, her report.
Yes, sir, anytime you have an increase in traffic, there's always opportunity for more accidents to occur. Um, you know, we, we're trying to monitor traffic all over the county. As you know, the, the county is growing. Traffic is getting bad in all areas. You know, you know, we're trying to stay on top of it best we can. I don't have the information to, to be able to provide you a specific answer for that generalized location. But I can say if, if traffic increases, there's an opportunity for additional accidents.
All right, Commissioner? Commissioner Coleman?
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this until the permits from the DNR and the EPA are either approved... DNR and the EPA are either approved or disapproved, whatever the case may be, and let's not take the chance of the exposures that we have talked about tonight, of putting on our voters and taxpayers out there until we know for sure exactly what this is going to turn out to be.
All right. I think we, motion to defer.
I'm making a motion to defer. Yes, sir.
Motion to defer.
Until the permits are either yea or nay.
Have a motion is their second. Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve ZM 3787, consider rezoning a request to revise the amended existing Golden Isles Gateway Plan Development.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the application with the recommended motion with the stipulation signify by raising your right hand. That is five. All those opposed, two. The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all items on Consent Agenda, General Business and Finance Committee, with the exception of any items any Commissioner so wishes to pull.
Have a motion to accept Consent Agenda. Any items? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda for Finance and General Business signify by raising your right hand? That is unanimous. Thank you. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.